Hello? Well, welcome. This is great. And we're so happy to have you here. Will you please start with the beginning of the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're very pleased to have everyone here tonight. And I'll turn it over to our superintendent for our spotlight.
Thank you. We are very excited this evening to be recognizing students and athletes as well as staff for this evening. We are going to first start with our CMY High School Film Festival. And I'm going to ask Leslie Cartier to come forward, the advisor who works so diligently with these students. And I'm going to have her read through the names of these students that will be receiving certificates. And we're going to ask them to come up and then I'll tell you a little bit about their accomplishments this year.
Dan Enzo, come on up. Lily Howard. Gracie Martin. Katie Johnson. Natalie Kelly-Broski. Megan Anna Redden. Alona White. Alexis Sutway. Katie, are you ready to go up? Ray Hiras. Quinn Ross. Zach Pendergast. Gianna Busunno. And Angelina Fajansvi.
Before we get to the photo, I'm going to direct your attention to this screen as I read through the awards that were received by these students participating in the CMY High School Film Festival. So the American High Best Comedy Award went to Dan Ryan Zoe Gracie Kate Natalie McKenna, Alyssa, for their Baker News piece, "Dan Fendler's Day Off," which was like hilarious. American High Best Virginal Short Award went to Dan Zoe Alexis Ray Quinn Zach for Baker News episode of "What Students Really Do on Their Brocks." The original drama took second place, and that was Zach Pendergast for "Rhythm." Music video, first place, Zach Pendergast for "You're Going to Go Far." The news package feature category, first place goes to McKenna Ryan Gianna Zoe for Baker News pajama rag at the event at Palmer Elementary School. And the PSA category, first place to Zoe McKenna Dan for Baker News pajama rag promo. And last, but certainly not least, the animations category, third place, Angelina for Double Trouble. Again, congratulations. We encourage everyone to log into our board docs and use the hyperlinks. In the interest of time, we're unable to do that this evening, but I would encourage everyone to log onto our board docs and use the hyperlinks. It's quite exciting to see the work of our students. The professionalism is unmatched. So thank you, Ms. Cartier, for all of the work and enthusiasm of these outstanding films and products. Thanks, students.
And parents, if you want to take a picture, please come on up front and get a picture, okay? Come on, parents.
All right, that's perfect. Everyone look right at me.
Congratulations, Eric Ross and Jack Sealy. We're going to switch yours to our boys and girls who play basketball in our Spring 2024 Championships. And so at this time, we have our coaches, Coach Lord Redonstone, Justin Bowles, and TA Chino Mubie, come forward if you're here to help us recognize our unified athletes. And athletic director Christopher Campbly is going to read through the athletes as they sit along with their partner. Again, congratulations to our boys and girls who play basketball team. They've been a fantastic team.
For the athletes, Mariella Mantra Dashiell, Jonathan McCall, Noah McKenna, Matthew Delu, Tyra McAllister, Justin Lewis, Kieran Monahan, Abby McCall, and for our partners,
I want to have everyone kind of gather around.
If anybody wants a picture, please feel free to come on up to the center and get a picture.
Doctor DeBarry, can you come a little closer here? And yeah, just so I can see everybody. Yep, there you go. Perfect. All right, everyone look at me. Big smiles.
We're going to move on to our flag football. Congratulations to our Section Three Championship team. We're going to have our two coaches, they're here, Cathy Morris and Ian Giannetta.
For our flag football athletes, Gabriella Awad, Amanda Lala, Rima Zima, Samantha Bala, Cindy Nish, Mallory O'Freddie, Say Lady Fellows, Raline Mahal, Sophia Randall, Aubrey Russo, Amy Sutcliffe, Greg Gethan, Andrea D'Amico, Tia Mina, Tia Lee Mina, Laura McAllister,
We're going to do our best to get a big team in that picture. So if you're a little bit shorter from up front. You're stripping a little bit. You might want to get behind. You're a little bit taller. All right. Yes, thank you, ladies! I'm Coach Neemo, I'm proud of you! Okay, big smiles, everybody!
Hi, my man!
Hi, guys. Just a short story of our flag football. I did say this to the girls' courses at the beginning of the season, give them back this was the first season in Section Three that we expected big things and certainly we ended that way. And so we can't be more proud of these ladies who have sustained the job that they did this year and excited for all that's left on the calendar, 54. So congratulations, girls. We're going to move on to our flag track and field. Coach Spicer, Cinnery, and Coco Spicer. Need to make your way up. So we're excited this evening to be recognizing the boys who are the outdoor track and field team who won the Section Three Championships for the third year in a row. Mr. Campbly is going to read through the members of his team. Again, congratulations.
Hold on to the following numbers, please, from forward. Zachary Area, Adam Hengler, Alex Keely, Adam McCall, Robertie Paul, Mary Ann Muddow, Aubrey Devola, Amy Sutcliffe, Torey Revers, Douglas Clark, Paul Clark, Billy Cornell, Noah McAllister, Jackson Biddle, Wyatt Decker, Corinne Miller, Jamie Johnson, Jacoba Welling, Tiberius Mendez, Ruben Hall, Corinne Neve, Amy Neves, Owen Lassiter, Adam McAllister, Amy McAllister, Amy McAllister, Karen McAllister, Aya Alatara, Corrie Caccio, Ethan Turner, Martin P. Moore, Amy McAllister, Zachary McAllister, Angela O'Shaughnessy, Margaret Stevens, Chad Wilson, Ryan Anderson, Logan DeLa, and Chris Curry.
Before we get to the picture, we're going to highlight a few other special awards for our track and field athletes. You could tell, some of them were so quick, we didn't even see them. Our individual Section Three Champions, we have the 4x800 meter relay team of Ryan Wilson, Zachary Area, Paul Clark, and Adam Cosman, for the time of 80 minutes, 18.5 milliseconds. Congratulations. 1600 meter Section Three Champion Noah Coeur, for the time of 4 minutes, 30.65 seconds. 4x100 meter Section Three Champion Chris Elder, for the time of 51.10 seconds. The 300m Simple Chase Section Three Champion Noah Coeur, for the time of 10 minutes, 15.81 seconds. The 4x400 meter relay Section Three Champions, Nathan McGlitch, Zachary Area, Paul Clark, and Chris Elder, for the time of 3 minutes, 31.21 seconds. Also, the 4x800 meter team competed and placed sixth in the New York State Outdoor Track and Field Championships. And again, congratulations to that team of Noah Coeur, Paul Clark, Zachary Area, and Ryan Wilson.
All right, guys. We're no strangers to this photo. We're going to squeeze in, okay? This background, I can't see on your faces. We don't very far. Yes, that's good. Come up front. Okay. All right, everyone look at me. Big smiles. Thank you.
We're going to transition to our girls' track and field. And for our girls' track and field, we're going to have coaches if they're here, Kelly Gallagher, Barbara Ross, Elizabeth Cullen. I will have Mr. Campbly introduce the students. We are recognizing this evening, this evening, the girls' 4x400 meter relay team, which competed in the New York State Football High School Association Outdoor Track and Field Championships. And those teams number five.
Andrew Williams. Amanda Lala.
Have everyone scoot this way. Everyone, look this way.
Moving on to the crew. Members of our RCD crew team competed in the SRAA National Championships. So we're going to highlight the four, excuse me, the three groupies, the senior fours, the junior fours, and the lightweight fours. I'm going to ask Coco Button and Coach Skipper, and she's here to come up as well.
We will start with honoring the senior four team. The men's team is made of Delaney Hitchcock, Anna Marie Mala, Felicia Abadari, Anna Marie Mala, and Anna Marie Mala. The junior four runners consist of Gabriella, Iam, Arielle, and Amanda Lala. And members of the lightweight four include Bailey, Peter Cola, Amy Neve, Emma Natsen, Rose Thornton, and Marissa Barnes. And then we have the junior four, junior four, and the lightweight four.
So we'll start with the junior four team, which finished in top. Well, congratulations.
You guys literally come up and scoot in the middle. Yep, there you go. And if you can lean just a little, yep. Yeah. Pull the dirt to the right. Big smile.
And we will now transition to our staff in the youth spotlight. All right, Mr. Halomback. So the Board of Education, we're excited to have Jeremy Halomback, who's a counselor at C of M Baker High School, who goes above and beyond for our students. Mr. Halomback has been recognized today for his kindness, compassion, and dedication to our students. The district received letters from parents praising Mr. Halomback, more specifically in favor of one of our juniors that had fallen in the battle. The job of high school counselor may seem late at times, but our family would argue the exact opposite. Mr. Halomback works tirelessly to support his students in every and single way. He deserves praise and recognition for his unwavering highnesses and values. A simple thank you seems worldly in a word. Our family will forever be appreciative and sensitive to praise. Mr. Halomback is also nominated for this spotlight by Baker High School Principal Chris Dent. Here's an excerpt of his nomination. Jeremy is consistent, deliberate, and caring shows for students' families. He treats his Baker students as his own and continually goes above and beyond to be sure students know that he genuinely, genuinely cares about them and their futures. Jeremy has been willing, time and time again, to put the needs of students first, and does so willingly, in the same and the name of doing whatever is needed to support students. Jeremy is an example of patience, dedication, and positivity that all who know and are fortunate enough to work with him witness in Jeremy each and every day. Our high school and our district serving Blackie Adams, Mr. Halomback, you are appreciated. You are appreciated. Thank you for making your generous and countless lives. And our next recognition is a community spotlight, is a special spotlight. And we're very excited to be recognizing Matt Taylor. For those of you who do not know, Matt is a videographer with the APP DC. He's been recognized for his dedication to our community. Matt has been a staple at our Board of Education meetings over the last 15 years. He's dedicated, he's a dedicated videographer who captures monthly meetings, sporting events, which I know aren't his favorites, awards ceremonies, and so much more. We appreciate his work. He's always willing to help and often shares his photos and videos with the district when our folks can't be here. Matt, on behalf of the Board, or Matt Matt, as you're referred to in the sporting world, can't thank you enough for everything that you do for our school district and our school community, and for that, we are ever grateful. So thank you so much.
What's up around, guys?
Now we're going to hug you.
You can do that. Congrats, man.
Yeah, man, man!
Bye, Hannah. I'll see you later.
Well, that was super. Now, normally at this time, we would tell parents, staff, which would thank them, would congratulate them, we would tell them they could go home. But, word butts got out. Uh, we do have another special recognition tonight. Special thank you for our Board of Rapp students representative, our Board of Education representative. And I think Joe's got that.
So each year, we recognize our outgoing Board of Education members, and we're sad to see Maya leaving us, but we're certainly excited for all the great things that she'll be doing next year as she goes away. And it takes on a new adventure in the world. So Maya, we can't thank you enough for all of the feedback, the dedication that you've committed to our district over the last year as student ex officio board member. And on behalf of the district, we have a fall into a blanket, which we hope will keep you warm when you're off to college, and also a gift from members of the Board of Education for your contributions. So thank you so much.
Can you tell Maya leave now, or she has to say something? Thank you, Wayne. Yes, I guess at this point, maybe she could be excused, you're on your own. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Feels like we should be done, guys.
Now, onto some other work. Actually, very important work, our goals for next year. Joe's got them outlined on the board, I think, so go to that.
Uh, so we have, we have our draft goals for the 2024-25 year that we're putting up this evening for further discussion. I do want to highlight first the work that we completed this year. And so, I'm going to pull up the 2023-24 Success Planning Guide, and this is not an unfamiliar sight to the board, but I wanted to just quickly scan through, showing that we have completed a lot of the work that we set out to complete this beginning of the school year back in August, when these Board of Education and District Goals were adopted. And so, what you'll see here on this document for the public is the short-term, short-term objectives and action steps that were completed, areas that we continue to still strive toward meeting the long-term objectives and goals. Those are listed as in progress. You'll see a few of those in some areas. And then you'll see the little check marks where we feel that we, as a district, once the leadership team and the staff have gone through, and we feel that we've accomplished what we set out to accomplish in those goals. And hopefully, that's evident in the work that we shared over the course of this year with our data workshops and other dialogue that we've had. So what I would like to point out again, priority area number one, exemplifying culturally responsiveness, diversity, equity. We feel that goal is accomplished, and you'll see in the 24-25 proposals that there isn't a goal related to this priority area, because we feel that we addressed it based on the strategic plan. Looking forward to providing project-based learning experiences, goal one B. You'll notice that this goal is also on the 24-25 draft, because as we communicated, this is a multi-year process in order to get our staff trained to where they need to be, and to have created the student experiences that we know are going to be so valuable for our students as they continue to move forward. In the area of increasing school safety and security, we feel this goal has been accomplished, given the infusion of the school resource officers and SRPOs in all of our buildings, the trainings that we've done with our staff related to school safety, and the implementation of the threat detection systems across the district. I do want to point out, I put this out there in the Friday letter for the board regarding a potential resolution for the MISBA Annual Convention related specifically to our SROs and SRPOs. One of the barriers that we currently have with the way the legislation is in place is that there's a $35,000 cap. And so, what I would be proposing for the Board to consider, the reordering, is to put forward another resolution similar to what we're doing for the capital construction, and have it focused in on increasing that waiver. I do know in this legislative session, it did pass the Senate, it went through, there was a proposal in the Assembly, never made its way to the table for the vote, and therefore it's not going forward. But I do believe that we have to advocate more in order to keep those individuals in our system.
Yes, I think that's a great point. It had been task for teachers and the others, somehow they left out SROs.
So we will continue, I have a meeting with the chief of police tomorrow, and before team, I met with the sheriff, I met with the sheriff last week. So we have plans in place. We're not, we'll make it work, we'll do what we need to do. SROs are not going away, and we met our goal, we'll continue to meet our goal, but we certainly will do, kind of try to advocate to make it a little bit more efficient for folks within our system. Because we know that those school resource officers not only provide safety, but they're there as counselors and supports for students, and they really have created some positive relationships with our students in all of our schools. Next goal was related to fiscal responsibility and our work with funding improvements in building the future. Most of the work has been completed, although you'll see long-term in-progress goals, which will carry over to 24-25. And that's having the Board of Education officially adopt a plan to move forward for another project, so that we have that sustainable, meaningful, long-term plan that's going to carry us forward in the future. And last but not least, I've got a communication that has, I think, been accomplished with the implementation of the community cafes across the district. You'll see on the next couple of slides, we're looking to expand that, so that there is some building-level community cafes moving forward. Certainly, that's an area that we can always improve, and we will continue to try to get as much information out in surveys. We're proud of the fact that a lot of thought exchanges this year, and we'll continue to do more. And as I shared in the Friday letter, there's a lot more coming that I think will be very beneficial for us as we continue to move forward. So that was, in a nutshell, the summary of the 2023-24 goals. If I shift to the proposed goals, I won't do the summary because it's pretty straightforward, but if I pull up the board district goals, we are focusing in on the same areas where we highlighted before, creating optimal educational experiences. And for that goal, looking at our feedback from our school committee and the community perception survey, we're going to focus this year on recognizing and supporting the unique academic needs of all students. And you'll see those core objectives that we'll be striving to meet based on that goal, as well as the areas of measure. Some of these areas of measure are consistent this year, and we will continue to expand on, because we do feel like the data dashboard and the acrodiades really help us drive the work that we're doing with our staff. Certainly, where does artificial intelligence play into student engagement and achievement? And we are doing that work, Renee has put together a committee that is navigating that. And I do feel like we are further ahead than at many other places because of the work that started this year, that we will more or less formalize as we move forward into 24-25. Looking at goal B, one B, this you'll see is consistent to goal one B for the current year, all related to project-based learning. Some of the objectives have changed, but the focus here is to continue to work to create those experiences that are going to help keep us aligned with the new movement of the commission proposals and recommended changes that are currently out for public comment with the New York State Education Department. In the area of health and safety, where you'll see a shift here is that we are moving away from the actual physical safety and security, because we're doing that, and we're looking to shift toward continuing to evolve our social emotional supports to meet the needs of all students. You'll see that that continues to be a priority area. We know all the students are feel safe and connected in school, they're less likely to have behavioral concerns, and they're able to function, and they're able to really focus in on what is important, and that's the learning, the material, the concepts of the curriculum that we've set forward. In the area of fiscal responsibility, we're continuing to expand our facility improvement planning as part of the funding improvements in building the future, with that emphasis on making sure that all of our instructional spaces are ready for future generations of students. As I alluded to earlier, this Board of Education, along with district leadership, we're going to have to formalize our plans moving forward and get community, community, what's the word, buy-in and support to move this forward with a capital project over the course of the 24-25 school year. So we have some key measures that we've listed here, and the hope is that, again, we have a successful capital project goal, we have, continue to have successful budget and proposition goals this 24-25 school year. Last but not least, we're now going communication, continuing to promote collaboration, cooperation and communication, and as I mentioned before, really trying to expand the community cafe model. It worked, we had five this past year. If we have one each month, I think we're happy with that. We have enough ideas that we generated from the community with our joint PTA meetings and just the feedback that we received. But we'd like to take it one step further, and over the course of the year, have at least every building do one community cafe as well, that's specific to that building, so we can get additional feedback. And I do believe that with the thought exchange, we are continuing to create surveys. I shared with President Jenkins yesterday, or this morning, we have exit surveys that we have prepared for folks that leave our district, as staff that leave through the thought exchange. We have entry and exit surveys for students, it's fair and it's transition. Only going to help us get better if we know why some of these things are happening, and what they liked about the experience. And then we're also most proud about the fact that on June 22nd, when students walk across the stage at the Expo Center, they're going to be given their diploma. With that diploma, they have a QR code for a quick survey that we're going to ask our graduating seniors for honest feedback, so that we can continue to grow and stay solution-focused and improve. So those are some additional examples of how, over the course of 24-25, we will expand our outreach and get feedback from our stakeholders. I know that was relatively quick. I don't know if there are specific questions or ideas, suggestions, concerns, that you'd like to bring forward?
Just the question is, I think there's been a long-term focus on connecting with students and getting them to participate in various activities. And I think we inferred that there, I'm not sure we spelled it out, but I think one of our objectives is to offer more and more opportunities, like the elementary games and elementary clubs that weren't there, what, five years ago? A lot of them are now there, we're continuing to develop them. But back to the points that made, and of course, Sandra Rufo, the New York State School Board's president, which we all met, is her theme is educate the whole child. But I think we had an early discussion that academics are important, we recognize them, but they aren't everything in terms of growing that child through this educational process. So I just want to be sure we have that.
It looks like we may expand this spectrum of experiences and enrichment opportunities to create goals for citizens of our future. We may be able to expand that further to clarify.
Recognize participation.
Participation. I will have Danielle and the team will look at that.
And I know our statistics are who tracks that all the time.
She does, yes. It is on the dashboard and ready to communicate. Other?
I was wondering, considering the potential changes in graduation requirements, I don't know if it makes sense to relook at our goals now or wait until that's approved and final, but it looks like there'll be some refinement of what constitutes a high school graduate in New York State, with some emphasis on CTE and some of the seals of, you know, the certifications students can receive. And I just wonder, you know, maybe incorporating that into, you know, not just looking at the regents rate, but maybe some of those measures as well.
Yes, we can certainly add to that. I do know that from what the State Education Department has been communicating, this is going to be a slow rollout, because they wanted to do it right. So I don't anticipate, we'll see in November when they finalize, that's when they're anticipating at the Board of Education meeting, adopting some of these changes, and they'll introduce their formal plan, like what that timeline looks like, so we can certainly add to that. You know, it may not be as necessary, because we have there the goal of maintaining the less than 65% of our students receiving the vision of public education. I don't know when that will go away, but to my knowledge, I don't think it's going to be for these current students who will be going into 24-25. But we can look to add a key measure related to our CTE involvement and some of those other areas, in our seals, because we have the seals of civic readiness, the seal of bi-literacy, any other seal that we have, we have the data from this year, and we can certainly show a measure where we're hoping to grow that, based on the results from this year.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. I mean, whether it's final this year, next year, never, I think it's probably good for us to track those kinds of things.
Is there a list of all the different types of seals, I guess? Those are the ones right now that we have, but what will be interesting, based on the Blue Ribbon Commission, is that moving forward, schools will have the ability to create their own designations for seals, because basically what's being recommended is there is only one diploma if everything passes. So you get a diploma from New York State of where there'll be differentiation based on student needs and successes are in the actual seals that go on those diplomas. So there might be, where we currently have, you know, endorsements for, you know, success in math and science and humanities, we might have to, as a district and a board, create those seals if that's what we choose to do. But the ones that currently are out there in the state are just the two, the red one is the seal of civic readiness and the seal of bi-literacy.
Those are the two seals that we have, but we also have the individual arts assessment pathways for music and fine arts. So those would be other options that our students could choose. And if you think about it, when you graduate from college, right, you get your diploma, but some students graduate cum laude, summa cum laude, magna cum laude. So we can do something very similar, where that's where your distinction will come in from a diploma perspective. It's going to be super interesting to see what the public comment is on this Blue Ribbon Commission information.
So my thought too is, again, a great way to survey the feedback from our community once we know a little bit more of where the state's going, with their detailed plan, we can get feedback, because there's going to be a lot of flexibility that the Board of Education and the district has, moving forward to create these recognition options for students. Other discussion questions?
I think the goal of communication is important for the other three goals to be successful. I think we've come a long way this year, and I think in order for us to keep moving the district forward, we need to make sure that we are communicating with the stakeholders and the community wants to be involved in the state of the other community cafes. So I think that's really important.
So we will try to make some of those adjustments. The lookleaks I'll highlight in red, and then I'll put it in this Friday, Friday letter for the board to marinate on, and then we'll have them on the agenda for official approval at the reordering in July 1st.
Okay, thank you. And just a, just a little.